Okay, 1:30. We'll be in order. All members are present except Bruce. And we're gonna begin today with the elementary school students' presentation.
So we're gonna mix up the order just a little bit. So if we can invite Kathy and your crew to, Mrs. Akerston, come on up and show us what you got today.
I have nine of my elementary friends joining us today for our school board meeting. And what an honor and a privilege for me to be able to bring to you students from Painesville Elementary School. You recall in December, I brought over third, fourth, and fifth graders to show the great things that were happening at their grade levels. And I thought this is the perfect opportunity for some of our younger learners to come on over and talk about the things that are happening at their level as well. So we were able to connect just a couple times real brief. And so this is really impromptu and we have a lot of excitement from our students to be here. So thank you for this opportunity. Our presenters today, I'd like to introduce them to you. From kindergarten, if you want to give a wave, we have Thad Campson. Give a wave to our school board members. Aspen Neefell. Aspen, wanna give a wave? Peyton Gurkin, who's joining us from kindergarten as well. First grade, we have Jonathan Payne, James Haynes, Violet Clark. And from second grade, we have Silas Serna, Emily Kirsten-Hahn, and Sophia Rasmussen. So they will each be taking an opportunity to talk about a few things today that I think you'll be impressed with. So looking from our, or hearing from our kindergarten students, what would you like to share, Thad, about kindergarten? What's some happenings in kindergarten? Art, and tell us a little bit more about art. What do you do in art in kindergarten?
We paint and color and stuff.
Okay, who would like to go next? Peyton, would you like to talk about kindergarten?
We tell sometimes.
You tell sometimes, and how do you tell time? Using what?
Using a clock on Mrs. Ludwig's board.
So we're learning how to tell time in kindergarten. That's pretty special. Okay? Other kindergarten, what would you like to share?
Count by fives.
Count by fives in kindergarten. And we count by fives all the way up to what?
100.
100. So that's pretty impressive in kindergarten. Thank you, kindergartners, for sharing. You can see some other skills that they're working on as well. Hearing from our first graders, we're gonna have Jonathan get started sharing about Google Classroom.
So Google Classroom, we would, this is where we would know what to do when we would do our daily five in morning meeting. So... So, dear school board members, good morning. Today's Tuesday. I hope you learn about how we use iPads in our class. They make learning fun. Ms. Nelson puts new slides in Google Classroom every day. We use them for our morning meeting and daily five reading. Sincerely, Jonathan. So, we would say the date. And we would drag our thing, our number into the position. We would say how many days we have been in school. Then we would count by tens. And we would usually have a word of the day. And we would get started for our daily five. These are the five things we do each day for daily five. We would do writing, word work, iPad, Nelson's table, and read to self. And usually for word work, it would be word mapping, which would be... You would... So we are learning about the ER, IR, and UR. So you would press this, tap the start button, and listen. So we would tap it, then we would write it, and then go to the next one. We would keep doing that on this paper. So we would like write, like how many syllables, kind of, like hu, er, her. We would write the H and then the ER one, and write it on the line. So we would do that. Then we would do writing, which we would click this link. And we would go through the spelling sentences. We would click the microphone and we would hear what it says. Then we would write the sentence and we would go from 1 to 11. With this kind of paper. It was write our capital and a period. Check that, and we'll go to the next one. And next, we would do some sort of iPad thing. We would do iXs or boom cards. Usually it's at least three boom cards or three iXs. And then after that, we would listen for 15 minutes. And then we will, and then if we have time, we would do listen to reading on iPad. And we would do that daily five, then it would be time for lunch.
So if you recall, COVID and distance learning, Google Classroom was our platform. And so that was a good thing that came out of how we changed education and accessing our curriculum to students. So many teachers have brought that forward, even though we changed our in-person model, right? Back to in-person. So we were able to utilize some of these tools, such as Google Classroom that Jonathan talked about, which is really a great thing that came out of it. Thank you, Jonathan, for sharing. Violet is going to share with us something special that they do on their iPads as well.
So first, what we do is when we're done with our work in the morning, we watch our QR. And then we scan some different things. And we do extra math or we do our story.
Would you like to scan and show them how that works?
So first, we always scan. And then we find our names. We go down. And then you're gonna type in your code. And then you sign, and then you press continue to start it. And then this is how you get the numbers.
So we use extra math to help with our factuality, multiplication, division, addition, and subtraction. That's what they're using here. Again, this is their access point, where they can just use that QR code and it brings them right to where they need to be. Next, we have James sharing about CSO.
So I'm gonna go into my journal. Then I have all the things I've done.
James, can you tell us, when do you use CSO?
We usually use it in the morning during lunch.
During that reading time, again, Google Classroom and CSO are used. And what other special class do you use CSO in, James?
We usually don't use it in any other class.
How about Sine?
Yes, we do the coding board.
That's another place. Anything else, James, you'd like to share with CSO?
Now I didn't mind. I made a baseball stadium with dots. Just paper, let me use the pen. So how we did that is we went into shapes. And we went to circle, and then I made a baseball stadium with it.
First graders, anything else from your grade that you would like the school board members to know that you're learning about? Violet?
We're learning about some subtraction and additions. And then we are learning about counting to 190.
Very good, thank you, first graders. Let's hear from our second graders, starting with Sophia.
So for extra math, we, there's six second, three second, two second, and then 1.5 second. Addition and subtraction. And then there's times and division. And when we were writing to 1,000, we wrote by ones, twos, fives, and tens.
Thank you, Sophia. Silas?
Okay, so in Mrs. Base's class, that's the class that I'm in, um, we do science on Fridays, because all of you know that Fridays are the best days of the week. And we usually do it on mystery games. And in Sine, we're building Ozalbot City. It's still in the making. And then we are all doing Mother's Day special gifts. And then for reading, we have AR goals. We just started having them, like, in third quarter. AR testing, vocabulary, and neurowriting. We do that on Mondays.
And Emily, what would you like to share about second grade happenings? What are some of your favorite things?
Um, one of my favorite things, I mean, we're tested. And then we're, we're doing, was writing to 1,000, we do dot dots in base.
Second graders, anything else you'd like to share before we wrap up? All right, then our last slide is an opportunity for you to ask any questions from our, to our kindergartners, first graders, and second graders.
Any questions?
I have one. If Friday's the best day of the week, what is Monday?
Uh, probably the worst.
So should we not have school on Monday?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. No, we don't.
Well, sounds like they're all very proficient and very well spoken. Do we really need teachers? We did a presentation. These might be our future teachers. And so I'm excited that they have this opportunity to present all the great things that they are doing at our Painesville Elementary School. With that, thank you. We will hand it back over to the school board and we'll take a break again.
Good job.
Mrs. Akerston, would you like to just stay up and write into your report? That was a great segue. With Teacher Appreciation Week, this is the work of our teachers that you all see. Grades three, four, five, our special education teachers, our specialist teachers. What a special week. So this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I just want to give a sincere and heartfelt thank you to our teachers at Painesville Elementary School. This is certainly a special time for all of us to reflect on the lifelong impact that educators have on our students, on each other, our school, our district, and community. And so I wanted to share my favorite quote as an educator with all of you. And it's by Jimmy Casas. If you ever get a chance to read any of his work or see him speak, but this is quote. "In the end, your legacy won't be about your success. It will be about your significance and the impact you made on every student, every day, and whether you were willing to do whatever it took to inspire them to be more than they ever thought possible." And that's why we are here as educators and taking opportunity this week to recognize and show appreciation to our teaching staff. Also, tomorrow is our school nurse recognition day. I think it's important that we recognize our school nurse. She, Rachel Braun, has been covering elementary and secondary. And so I want to give her a special thank you as well. Her dedication and her services to our health office. You know, from that simple putting on a Band-Aid to stopping a bloody nose, to giving medication, to responding to medical emergencies. Her depth of knowledge and dedication is appreciated. Kindergarten update, we are currently at 68 students registered for kindergarten next year. And so I'm very appreciative that we will be adding a fourth section to our kindergarten team in the fall. So thank you for the support from the school board, from Superintendent Bullard, and our staff, just really utilizing our resources and having that come to fruition with the members that are supporting that fourth section. Second grade music program. Mrs. Strand and the second grade teachers and students put on a great show a few weeks ago, called "The Best Pet Show Ever." We had great attendance, and I want to say thank you to the families and friends that were able to come. You know, those programs like this give our students opportunity to be in front of an audience, where they get to practice various skills along with their musical talents. We have fifth grade music program and graduation coming up on Thursday, June 1st, at 1:30 here in the auditorium. Our fifth graders are participating in various opportunities. And Principal Orline and his crew are putting together some great opportunities to help with the transition for our fifth graders next year. We've got orientation coming up this week. We've got some different activities planned where they get to meet the middle school staff, so that they have familiar faces when they return in the fall. I want to recognize, I know it's been on School Board Minutes previously, but take this opportunity to recognize our retirees from Painesville Elementary School. I know Superintendent Bullard mentioned they had over 100 years of service between Mary Heinen, Joan Blonigan, and Deb Bangston, all our paras at the elementary, who will be retiring at the end of this school year. Their years of service, knowledge, and love for students and learning will be missed. A special retirement recognition will be held at the end of May. So please be looking for details. And I'd like to formally invite all of the school board members to that as well. It's hard to believe, we're wrapping up the school year. It's gone by extremely quick. I remember sitting in this seat for my very first board meeting, and here I am at, you know, mid-May already. So we're wrapping things up. We've got field trips, Field Day coming up. We're working on class lists for next year, getting things fine-tuned, that master schedule. You know, you've heard Principal Orline talk about the master schedule, and there's a lot of layers that go into that. Same thing at the elementary. And so really, meeting with teams to find out what is best for students and what does that look like. Looking at personnel changes, you know, with the hiring of kindergarten. And, you know, sometimes you have that domino effect. And so we're working through those changes and we'll continue solidifying that up. And then just, you know, taking some time to celebrate our end of the school year with different celebrations, different school-wide gatherings in honor of a great year. That's my report to you. Questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
As far as the information that was sent out to parents on, I guess, preparing for kindergarten, just to get an idea of how many students or who's looking at enrolling their students here. How many went out? Because I remember there was a number that you had sent out.
Yes.
How many were actually returned based off of that?
I'd have to go back and confirm that number. I know we sent out, was it roughly 70-ish? We got back 55-ish.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So that was a nice return. And then we had had some trickle in since then.
So then are a lot of it from that preschool side that are coming in?
Yep, many of our students are going through our preschool program, our kindergarten program. Quick questions? Well, thank you. And as we, yep, you guys can catch the applause and come back. As they filter out, let's just give them one more round of applause. Thank you, guys. You did great jobs. All right, and then with that, we'll invite up Mr. Orline, our secondary school principal, for his update.
All right, good afternoon. Different spot.
I know. Throw in a little change in, change order.
I would like to just echo what Mrs. Akerston was talking about with Teacher Appreciation Week. It's just the amount of respect that I have for them is just overwhelming because there are so many things behind the scenes. You know, it's not just, it's just not teaching a class. It's just dealing with the, all the things that go along with it, the social issues, the, you know, the things that are, that can be really difficult for our kids. It is, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I just, I just really appreciate the overall job that our teachers do, not just content area. So just really appreciate that. Appreciate Rachel for what she does in the nurse's office and, you know, coming out of COVID and the responsibilities that she had with that. And then continuing with what she's doing with both buildings is, I am very appreciative. So it is a busy time of the year for us. We have, there's just, feels like there's something going on every day. We have our athletics going on that Mr. Hendrickson will talk about. But we just, we just have a lot of other things that we have to plan for. And a lot of it is what our seniors, you know, what the last few weeks of school is gonna be for our seniors. And then just celebrating, you know, our other students in different ways. And so there's a lot of activities going on. Just a couple, tomorrow is Egg Day at the Elementary. Natalie Ouch and the FFA do a great job with organizing that. They work really hard at that and appreciate that. Again, May 11th, fifth grade is coming over. Jen Andrist and Sad put that on. And we just really appreciate all the planning that goes into it. We work in Track and Field Day with sixth grade and kind of make it a really cool opportunity for kids to come over and see what it's all about. On May 19th, we have our Dollars for Scholars Grab and Go Breakfast. This is a new event for us. And it's at 7:30 to 8:15 at Bud Bee Hive Resort. And so we have, working on getting everything set up. And Ben assures me that it's gonna be outstanding venue for us. Absolutely. And then we, on May 21st, which is a Sunday busy day, FFA banquet at 1 o'clock in the auditorium. We have backglow at 4, and honors banquet at 6. And then the next week, on May 25th, is the last day for seniors. And we start that day with graduation practice and taking care of a few housekeeping items. A few fine arts events. On May 15th, we have a band concert. May 22nd is a seventh and eighth grade choir concert. And then the choir goes over to the, to the elementary and the nursing homes in town. And those are scheduled with three different dates coming up. Graduation in the pack. We are, we're excited about it. We have a pretty good plan, a pretty good layout on what things are gonna look like. And we're getting things ordered. And Jen and Cassandra do a lot of the laying out of what it's gonna look like. So I just kind of am along for the ride with some of that. But I will get information to you soon on what that'll look like for the board. Typically, the board will, would be sitting up by the stage, and so I'll get that out to you. We have, we're working on master schedule. Our students are registered for classes. And I just want to mention Jay Thompson, who is retiring this year from our science department. And he's, he helped, you know, get robotics started and golf coach and just a number of different things over the years. We are planning a celebration for him. And I'll let you know when that is, so that you can attend if possible. Any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson, can we see what's going on with activities?
Right, so last one I missed, because I was, I was April 11th, right? And Track and Field was at St. Paul State. That was a lot of fun to go watch them compete. And our athletes and coaches were everywhere. That was a lot of fun. So we're a little over halfway, probably about two-thirds of the way through our spring seasons right now. And it's fun to see our athletes competing again. Spring season, like Mr. Orline said, means it's concert time. We just had a choir concert tonight, so Ben and Taylor did an outstanding job last night. As Mrs. Bungam with our group, we had a talented group. It was really fun to listen to them sing and perform. And we also have that 6 to 12 band concert on the 15th and 6 to 8th grade choir on the 22nd. So since our last board meeting, I went through and counted how many events that have been either canceled, postponed, had the date changed due to weather that current day, or we looked at the forecast and had to bump it up a day or move it back a day. We had to look at umpires, we had to look at transportation, and much, much more. And we had 23 different events that were changed in the last month. So it's been a lot of changing, communicating, trying to line up umpires, trying to cancel umpires, trying to line up workers, cancel the workers, line them up again. I know some other schools have actually been borrowing our bus company. One day is where we don't have all of our buses in use. Our transportation has been used by other schools. So it's been a crazy spring, obviously, so just lots going on and a lot of updates with our online schedules. So again, I really appreciate all the patience and understanding with people and the ever-changing schedules that we've had. It's hard to believe that sections are actually gonna be starting up here in a couple of weeks at the end of May. So it's been tough to try to squeeze, basically, what spring sports try to do is they try to have a seven-week outdoor season. Well, it's basically been crunched down into about four and a half. So now we're playing games on Saturdays, Wednesdays, a lot of double headers. So it's been, it's been crazy, and it's been a challenge for everyone. But thankfully, we're making it through so far okay. Weather looks good outside right now, but we also have a 70% chance of rain over New London today for our baseball game, so who knows what's gonna happen there in a couple of hours. So again, check the online schedule, check our Facebook page, our Twitter account. Brandon does a great job of getting updates out pretty much instantly whenever anything changes. So it's been crazy, but I really appreciate, and umpiring is basically a thankless job, but I really appreciate all the efforts that our umpires put in. And sometimes... been crazy, but I really appreciate, and umpiring is basically a thankless job, but I really appreciate all the efforts that our umpires put in and sometimes with the changing schedules, like I've said, they don't get notified until less than twenty-four hours before. Uh Ken has umpired some for us. Tim Patron has umpired a lot. Kylie Eversen, Bryce Savage, Garrett Lewising, Chad Campbell. And I'm, hope I'm not missing anybody else in there, but uh really appreciate all their, their work to go in there and you know, give back to our kids too. It's, it's, it's a lot of fun to go out there and, and watch them perform too. So, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions?
This has to be a record, huh? As far as uh pushback. I mean, obviously, I mean, if you don't know the answer, but I
um, what
I gotta give you credit.
Longest tenured AD in our conference said that this is the worst that he has seen. So, and we have two new ADs this year and three new ones next year. Uh, so ACDC is getting a new one, Royalton and Eden Valley are all getting new ADs next year, so. Yeah, but hopefully that means we're good for another ten years, yeah. Anything else?
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, we'll invite um Chris O'Brien um come on up and let us know what's happening in community education.
Hello. So, yeah, we have a lot going on too. It's, summer is coming. It actually feels like it now, so that's good. Um, so I'll start with the pack. I'm just gonna do a, as the weather gets nicer, the gyms are less used and uh so we're looking at moving to our summer hours. So they haven't been posted yet, but we're looking at Monday through Thursday. We're gonna do eight to seven PM. This is open to the public. Um, Fridays eight to four, and then Saturdays and Sundays will stay the same. They'll be eight AM to eleven AM and then two to six. We're hoping to get some time to do some deep cleaning over the summer with people with the less usage in the, in the space. We're also talking about some daily uh new rates uh for pop, for daily rates. Um I'm making some additional memberships for youth and um, and adding some punch cards so we can just have drum up our membership and, and um promote usage of the pack when it, when it is during its busy times. Um, big events coming up. You already heard about graduation. We have a Just for Kicks event this weekend, but that's also tapering off. So I think it's uh a welcome thing for the custodians too, because they put in a lot of extra hours during that time. Um, for Community Ed, our program went out uh April twenty-sixth. Our registrations have been pretty steady. Um, we, sports and rec are, are the big ones. There's uh a lot of participation and a lot of registrations in that area. Some of our new programs, our new enrichment programs are um, are coming, our people are registering for them and, and they're um I'm hopeful we'll be able to run a majority of them. Um the uh, I know that we have gotten a few uh positive feedbacks from community members on the, the variety of programs that we have going on for the summer. So I'm, I'm um liking that a lot. Our summer class program, we have eighty-four contracts. We have um uh, we are going to be at the elementary school, so we took a look at the possibility of having some transportation. Cause that's kind of a barrier for some of our families for being able to register for classes and then be able to get here for like gymnastics, swimming lessons, even the basketball camp. So we are uh, we're working on um just kinda running a school van back and forth and, and getting kids from point A to point B. Um, our new registration program, we'll be finishing up this summer with the final training. We'll be launching the full program with, with facilities and then you'll be able to sign up for your classes using that program. So we're we're getting our final trainings and we'll be using that program um full-time, starting in the fall. Uh, Thursday on May fourth, we had Touch a Truck Night. We had close to a hundred people in attendance, lots of little people, about fifteen trucks. Uh, we had food, our food service provided uh hot dogs, chips, cookie. Um it was, it was a lot of fun. A lot of those little, it's always fun to watch those little people come running around and then the truck, they see one of the trucks and they just freeze and stare at it. They're it was very fun. We had kids climbing on things, beeping horns, moving cranes up and down and a few of the dads jumped on those trucks too. So it's not just for the kids. So, um, it was, it was fun and we'll um be talking about doing more fun family nights for, for our, for our community. Uh, so let's see, we will be talking about the pro, our playground later, so I'll save that. And some community connection things. I'm um working with the uh Community Foundation. Um Randy's trying to put together some coffee and conversation type of um opportunities where there'll be a lot of community stakeholders so we can talk about what's going on in our programs and who's doing what and how can we help each other. And it might be around youth development, it might be around a community event or just future growth of the community. So I'm, I'm looking forward to being a part of that program. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh um traditionally, Community Ed has had a membership with the Chamber of Commerce. And so I've been talking to them about how can the school be more involved in uh that membership? And so we are um, I've been talking to them about changing it, transferring it to have the school district's name on it. Cause Community Ed is a department of the school district and we have two schools and there's multiple departments in each of our schools. And um it got some, we got some really good conversations, especially around um, you know, the chamber saying, how can we be uh, how could we help the school? So maybe if we get more involvement from um what's happening in the school, we will know how to, you know, better support that. So, you know, maybe it's through the CTE program. How can, and we have a number of businesses that are similar to that. How can they help support or vice versa? So we just felt like this might be to just get, change it over. Uh, um, I attend every, all their meetings. Janelle will come, you know, quarterly or whenever it's appropriate and come and make a school district update, but that's, that's kinda happening in the, that's what's happening in the chamber piece of that. And then uh, April twenty-second, we had the talent show. The Arts Council was, uh sponsored it and it was uh, I think it was well attended. It was a normal attendance that they, that they normally get for that event and those proceeds we hang on to for them uh for when they wanna do improvements in the auditorium. So it's their fundraiser. And then finally, we have our July Summer Concert Series. So uh those are on Thursdays in July. We have um, we have four sponsors. Um, Magnify, Perennial, Great Rivers Library and Paintsville Area Ch- uh Chamber of Commerce. And also the City of Paintsville because they provide the space. So, you know, there's a number of us all working together to make this, to make it happen. Um so hopefully we have great weather on Thursday nights. Oh, the Green Roof area will be supplying the food. Green Roof and Rose, they will take turns. And we'll be posting the menu if you're interested to find out what's for dinner when you're on Thursday nights. So we'll have a full, fun summer and we'll be busy at our office. So looking forward to it. Any questions?
Have you had much feedback on the LEO program yet as far as utilization for families?
Yes, actually, the families are starting to figure out that they can have control of their schedule and um don't have to submit these, it's not paper, but it, you know, they had basically a calendar. And then we put it, then our staff puts it on and then it changes, then we do it again. And our staff's been, you know, you can go into your account and you can change it. And, and it has been, I think, certainly if we, the negative feedback, we don't hear that. So when you don't hear that, I feel like it must be going fine. So until somebody says something. But uh, the, I think then when our catalog came out, they were able to say, okay, good, now I don't need childcare here because I signed up for this class or I went to this camp. And they're able to fix and change their accounts. And they have, you know, they can change it up to two weeks prior, you know, so they have a, you know, they have a pretty good leeway until, until then. So I think it will be, um, this pick a day is different and um so I think we'll, I'll have a better idea of comparing it to last year's or last summer and see what the participation level was. So.
I see, uh, you know, from my perspective, I obviously jumped on it, literally gotta play around with it. Um, I absolutely love it so far. Um, I've had a few family members that our family members, families in the area that I know that were like, what is this? How do I do this? So just take your time, jump on there. I said, once you're, once you're on it, you'll, and I've got a lot of positive feedback from families on that front that after they've got signed up, it's been done. And then from, again, my experience, I I not stopped. I submitted my pause, I don't know if Carrie told you that, but I submitted my pause for my kids for the summer and I went back and said, oh no, I just hit the wrong dates. I was supposed to do Tuesdays through Thursdays, not Mondays and Fridays, and I had backwards. And so it was really simple. I went back on, I canceled it, I resubmitted it within minutes on my phone.
Yep.
And it was just done. So it's, it's been a good program. Uh, and I'm excited for the, for the follow-up. I think we used to be
Good. And once you, you, yeah, when we can put those on there. And once you've made your account, so not that I want you to go over to Melrose or Wilmer, but
Yeah.
those accounts follow you. So you can, if we, if we have something that, you know, there's something over there that we don't have, you can use your account to sign that, sign up at another district. So
Okay, that's cool.
That's, it is really, that is a really nice feature.
Yep.
So, anyway, great.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, and then before we hear from our secondary students, we'll invite Ken Azendorf up to hear what's happening um with our buildings and
So, good thing spring is here, right? It's more than annoying everything. Lawn is slow to come, but the weeds sure are. They're coming at full force. Anyway, upgrade uh the light, football lights. Met with uh, well, I've called Wilmer, they're, I'm very impatient. My kind of fixing stuff, but I'm figuring out, maybe I need to be more patient cause they are slow on returning calls and emails and stuff, but uh design was out trying to find the, the actual spots, see if we wanted to just fix it. And it is underneath, he's almost positive it is underneath the parking lot. So it's probably not a good option for us to go to Harlow, but uh, so he could not actually find it because he figured it was there. Um, did uh talk with uh the city on the, oh, water leak. That was the next one. So we've been turning on water for the players out on the field, so on and so forth. And uh, hasn't been a good year for Ken on that. Turned it on and underneath the bleachers, we got water just pouring out. So the curb stop, either something went wrong with the curb stop that it did not drain back. But the, looks like the pipe, the water was coming up at least five feet back and it's under the bleachers, underneath concrete. So got some decisions to make. We found that out early this week. So it's like, oh, so, um uh, we did, it is definitely a pipe. We did clean out the, where the water meter goes and found the crack. Upgrades on tennis courts. So I had Marla Sorensen contact me with a really nice uh letter sent to me. Um and I contacted her back and she is willing to help out with that whole deal. So I've kinda waiting, I'm gonna meet with her, I believe on Thursday. I've got it on, scheduled on my calendar. Uh, and I'll let you know how, what uh she brings to the table on that whole deal. I've been kinda thinking about that whole process out there and you know, the trees and everything else, how we wanna go. And uh this will actually be a help maybe with the money wise and every, maybe she's got contacts as well. And I think she was in the school district. If I remember correctly.
Marla's has been part of the discussion with Dee as well.
Oh, okay.
So there was about four or five of them um that I have been meeting with over the course of years. So let's make sure we touch base too.
Okay.
Around that, yep.
Oh, perfect.
Yep.
Yes, will do. So, um, the costs and stuff. Uh, Student Center, I did finally get all the rest of the material for Mr. Capstner and uh that is coming around really nicely. He's just got a few trim boards left and he told me today that uh at the end of the week, that should be all completed. So that'll be a nice feeling to have that done finally and the students don't have to look at a bare wall, so on and so forth.
So just to, to bring the board up to speed, what, when Ken kinda came through and walked, walked through the building, he saw some details that were um not, that were not finished. They were pieces that were just kinda sitting um unaccounted for. Um, one of those was in the Student Center. There were a couple of um pieces of trim that hadn't been finished and completed. And uh so that's what he's talking about. He, and you know, it's one of the things that I think is really nice when you bring in a new set of eyes is they see things that when we walk the space all the time, we don't always see them anymore. And so it was, that, that's what the Student Center update is.
So, um, haven't done anything with door fours. I just know they're in tough shape. But I do have to put a piece of trim back on one of the doors that has fallen off now and anchor that somehow in aluminum. So we'll figure that out, but uh, um, I did contact with the city on the, the sewer. And getting that started anytime and they, as soon as boss is ready, they're gonna come in and start that whole process. Talked with Dave, made sure it was okay that they get started as long as they fence it off decently and stuff, so. And then uh, um, Cassie came to me with uh the playground at the elementary school, putting more chips down, says it's actually becoming very unsafe. I do have two people working on quotes. I uh had a flyer that was left on my desk and I think Dave maybe gave me one and, or maybe he did. And then I actually did contact Roto Chopper to see if they had anybody in mind. He gave me another person. So I did a uh, reached out to them guys as well to get some quotes uh on that. If anybody else knows of any way with playground sick mulch, I'm happy to entertain you and look into it. So with that, uh, any other questions?
The one piece that I'll maybe add to that is so that if people are watching, um, it's not, we can't just go by like mulch from the cert, from the lawn center to put underneath the playground. There's a very specific um specifications that the mulch has to have, which is kind of like a essentially like an impact resistance so that if kids fall off the playground equipment, it for, it, it's almost like padding. So that there, it, it's a, an injury reduction.
If you walk through it, it is very actually soft.
Yep, so there's, um, that's why it is, it's, it's not like we can just call up to the garden center and say, hey, hook us up with a bunch of mulch. So that's why it's, there's very specific specifications to that.
This is specific for schools, correct?
For playgrounds.
Playgrounds.
Yep, for playgrounds.
Playgrounds. Especially if there's underage kids. I, I think there was a age limit on it for mostly, obviously we would make that age limit. So, any other questions?
Oh, I'm working with Tim from the Minnesota Wisconsin Playground for the preschool one and I know they have uh mulch and surface options, so I can get you
Yeah, if you just send me that, that'd be great. I'll, I'll look in. I think that's the same person I contacted for that equipment that was broken.
Oh, from the elementary playground, yeah.
Yep, we did that.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Alright, uh Chad, move on.
Yep.
Okay, next item, yep, is Mr. Orline, do you wanna introduce?
Yeah.
We've got going for our secondary student presentation.
So, um, we have a, a couple of activities that we just wanna touch base on a little bit. Um, I'm gonna have Emily Nelson come up here and she's gonna go first. And she's gonna just talk a little bit about the mock car crash that we had. And kinda some of the coordination and the things that went along with that. If you, if you saw it anywhere online or were there live, it quite a moving production and um was really impactful. So I just wanted to give her a few minutes to talk a little bit about that.
Hi, welcome. So my name is Emily Nelson. I'm the junior. Um, I was the head chairman of the mock car crash and I'm the vice president of SAD, which is Students Against Distracted Decisions. We're also putting on the fifth grade orientation, walkover and the eighth grade orientation. So um, the twenty twenty-three mock car crash, I wanted to illustrate distracted driving. This stuff happens every day. The students did a Jeopardy game on Tuesday, the day previous. Um, it was during connect time and we had advisors play it with the students and they learned, one of the main points that we wanted to have the students learn was um, well, it takes three seconds to become distracted and get into a car accident. So from that, we went on to the planning. So, or this only happened every four years. It was a big role to take on too. I didn't know that it was gonna be this much work, but it came out good. Um, during the planning stages, we started with only doing Wednesdays for like rep meetings and large group meetings with SAD. And from there, we kinda got our ideas out and earned down. We felt that distracted driving was more prone now with our age of kids driving in high school and that happens more like under the influence. After that, we kind of realized that Wednesdays weren't enough to start planning. So we had to add Mondays and Tuesdays every week to start planning additionally. Um I had to reach out to everyone personally outside of school, get into connection with them. Um, I believe they were kinda getting annoyed with all my emails. I sent probably thirty of them out within a month. Um, so with that, we had Lightly Sound, which was Sarah Meyer, Maggie Gutwold and a few others. Um, we Um, we had a lot of departments come out, which we had St. Martin come out, Lake Henry come out, the A and T and Lifelink. We did get Lifelink to land, thanks to Steve Stain. Um, we had other people involved like makeup and actress prep, which was Dave Schutz. He did the mulage for the girls participating in the mock car crash. We had Grant Leiser from Yarmouth Ford come out and he was the one that placed vehicles in the parking lot and get them staged for us. From Johnson's Funeral Home, we had Steve and Gerald. We had the Pansyl Police, which was Paul Wagner and Logan Eck. Then we have Pansyl Fire and Rescue. Then we had Parking Lot Prep, which was Ken and Grant Leiser. And then we had City of Pansyl come and sweep for us, so the helicopter could land. From the Pansyl school side, we had David, Jesse, Miranda and Jen help us kind of sign in and get stuff to the other people. And we had Mike come from the press. And then we had a few sponsors, Yarmouth Ford, Firehouse. And then during the Q and A questions, which I'll get into later, but they had us hand out little keynotes when they asked the question to the first responders. So we had a few meetings, we had two meetings in April leading up with the, with the main people with the mock car crash. So there we finalized our decisions and we got our main points adjusted. And we were able to work with the fire department to see what they could do. Usually these happened on Friday, but due to prom this year and we wanted to make sure everyone was there, they weren't away on appointments or other school activities, so we wanted on Wednesday, which it worked out great. Um, Andy Swann, the fire chief, actually liked it on Wednesday. It was more, it was easier for them because of, they always have meetings every Monday for fire and rescue. So planning on Monday and being on there on Wednesday, the, the crew knew what they were doing. So we had the SAD reps, Andres, Paul and Logan, Grant, Steve, the A and T Garage. Um, Steve from the Johnson's Funeral Home, Orland Rasmussen and Dave was on through text. They were the ones that came to every Tuesday's meetings. We also had the girls come on the last Tuesday meeting to go over their roles. Over the, overall, the planning process was really well. I was very impressed with the great communication that everyone came through, it made the job way easier. So now going to the morning of, which was April twenty-sixth. We had a busy morning, myself and a few other SAD members handed out lifesavers with a quote that stated, don't text and drive, let's save some lives. The students did seem very involved and were truthful with if they did text and drive, which we did give them a little warning, saying, let's not do that next, next time. Um, the morning did go really fast, um, we were really nervous, we all were, we're just, it was a lot of preparation. We wanted to execute this as well as we could. So following that, we met with Grant Leiser when he dropped off the vehicles and placed them in the parking lot. And then we started doing test mic, we started doing testing for the mics in the vehicles, so the student body could hear us from the yard they were standing in. And we were just putting our last touches on the planning aspect. Um, I had the girls sit down and we talked about the seriousness of the topic and how this will make a huge difference within the school and the, and the students' futures. Um, the girls were excited, but I could tell that they weren't truly like in the head zone yet. So I just wanted them to sit down and actually communicate with each other, saying like, like, what are you nervous about? Like, what are you like ready for? Like, are you still wanting to do this? Okay, so it kind of just went over that, which by then the girls were like, okay, let's do this. And we watched previous years of the videos that were posted on the Pansyl YouTube page. So when jumping to eleven thirty, we had the girls get their mulage done by Dave. And then by one PM, they were in the vehicles. We did have a little mess up with the overcom speakers with the nine-one-one ditch batch call with Paul Wagner and Maggie Gutwold. It only went to the middle school, but we did want it to go to the high school as well, but that just didn't happen, which is totally fine because we still got all the student body out there to watch. And then from there, we um kind of let the girls take over, it was out of my hands and it was in the first responder's hands. So I felt almost, I started crying, I was so nervous, I was just like, let's just get this done. So it went really well though. And then with that being said, it was forty minutes long, the video is still being edited, it's so much video to go through. So I will kind of contact that with Mr. Wolf and then have him possibly post that on the Pansyl YouTube page. And after that, following MCC, we had the students go to auditorium and I said a short thank you and described what the MCC was about, which was distracted driving, distracted driving is a major issue, a lot of people drive distracted, approximately six hundred and sixty thousand people in US drive on their phones per day. It's not also just distracted driving, but under the influence as well, describe that to the students. And then following that, we had Jackie Osterhaus to um come on the stage and talk about her daughter's experience. Um, she, her daughter graduated around ten years ago, she had an accident and now she's in a wheelchair. Um, that video will be up on the YouTube page too, if you guys will listen to her speech, it was very well done. And then after that, we had Fortress come out, which we've never had Fortress come out until this year. Andres kind of wanted some speakers to come in and I didn't know how to contact them, I just, I just let her do that. So she got um Chris, Matt and Jeremy to talk about their experiences. If you guys were there, they did it really well, explaining how it was their perspective of being the distracted or under the influence driver and showing the students like how detrimental that could be to somebody's life. So I thought they did really well, I hoped to have them uh the following four years. And then lastly, we had all the first responders and actresses come up on the stage and the students asked us questions about the planning process, how it is to, to respond to these um accidents and how it is to be a firefighter, EMS or a police officer. So now, guys have any questions?
Yeah, and maybe you mentioned it, uh, when did you start this plan? How, how many months back?
Beginning of, end of March.
Okay.
So it was about two months of planning. And I think I added up, I think it was like twenty-six meetings we had.
Okay.
So that's almost, that's a lot of, that's a lot of meetings in the past.
Good job, you guys.
Great job, great job. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, so the next pair we have up here that I want to introduce is Taylor Gierworth and Ben Bubby. And they both participated in the state speech meet. And I just, I thought it would be kind of cool to, to have them talk about the, the process and how they qualified and, and what it looks like the day of um, of the state meet and, and how they have time to prepare and, and how impromptu the whole thing really is. And so, uh, Ben talked, Ben promised it would be a half hour or less.
Yes, right there.
David, will you uh, will you slide that up so that they can go tell? Then I'll just take that one.
Yeah, there you go.
Wonderful.
Well, very nice. Well, um, I'll start if that's all right, first and foremost, it's lovely to be with you all here this afternoon, so what a deal. Who needs to take a math test, right? But uh, so, well, this is my, probably my sixth year in uh, in competitive speech, which has been delightful. I've stayed in the same category for, for that entire ride and I, hopefully Taylor will tell you a little bit about her category, but I'll just jump in, give you a brief explanation. So there's, there's a multitude of different categories within uh, within speech. So there's dramatic, delios and all, all sorts of fun. But I focused on extemporaneous speaking, which is really uh dive into domestic and international issues that are challenging the world and the world around us. And so we're given topics, three topics, and we choose one. We have a half an hour to write about a seven minute long speech, polish it and then present it. And we do that three to four times a day at each speech meet. So it's been a fun evolution of how uh, of how that has gone. So that's really been delightful to see my own progression. And then Taylor's really just skyrocketed in the last two years here and I'll let her tell a little bit about that.
Yeah, so it's my second year in speech and I've also stayed in my own category both years, which is prose interpretation. It's basically a presentation of an excerpt from a piece of literature that isn't poetry. I chose that because I like, you know, I'm an avid reader and I wanted to expand on that passion. But it's just been, it's been a really great experience being in speech. And I'm very happy to have made it to the state meet, my second year in speech, and I hope to continue on this path in my future years.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I'll just mention, it's just nice, this is my third time at state. And uh, being there, it's, it's full of excitement and full of a lot of uh, a lot of different people. And in my category, full of a lot of, a lot of cocky people. So we're all sort of walking around like it's a, you know, the, the elites only club in our extemproments. You know, you don't get to come in here, this is extempore speaking only, which is sort of funny, but anyways. So no, it's a, it's a fun, fun deal to get to that point, but boy, is there ever some competition. It's uh, it's, it's interesting because we, we really get to have our niche here with the same people, the same towns and the same style of competition. And boy, when you get to state, you're playing with the big boys. And uh, it's really impressive to watch some of the others speak. And I was thrilled to make it to the final round again. We do three uh, three preliminary rounds. And then from that point on, uh, they have this big sort of, well, they've got two massive screens that they display. This is in the city, so they've got these huge cafeterias. And everybody's just swarming around these screens. And when one of the categories comes up, you just hear an eruption of woo, you know, I mean, it's just sort of fun. But a lot of excitement around that. And making it to the final, finals this year was really delightful, so, yeah, absolutely. Um, well, what would you like to know? We're, we're happy to share, we didn't put together a lovely presentation like Emily did, but uh.
So when, when you uh, give your speeches at state?
Yes.
The, the judges are there, kind of give us a picture of what, are you in a room? Are audience members allowed to come in? How, how does that all work?
Yeah, well, Taylor.
Well, for my category, I don't know, I'm sure it's pretty similar for both of our categories. But each round for the preliminary rounds, there's one judge and the other people you're competing against. Which is around, for state, it's five other people in your category that you're competing in that room against. And then, since it was at state, many family members of other people came to watch. So it was very full rooms, you got to perform in front of way more people than you usually do, which was, it was kind of nice actually, getting to see the reactions of different um people that usually, you usually don't see. Um, so then final rounds, I'm not sure how it looks for state, but what would you say it's like?
Yeah, well, so again, I'm very similar in extempore speaking for the preliminary rounds. So again, we draw, it's a, it's a draw category is what they call it, because I have no clue what I'm going to be speaking on. I mean, I know it's current, current events, current topics, but I'm never exactly sure what, what type of issues we'll be discussing. Uh, and with that, we have certain draw times. So once we've drawn, we've got that thirty minutes of preparation, then we present, and then we sit down and watch the rest of the speakers. So every thirty, well, I shouldn't say that, every ten minutes or so, we have different speakers coming into the room. So it's not as, not as though everybody's sitting and watching everybody's speech, it's an evolution of people coming in and out of the room. But uh, but definitely a lot more folks than we normally have, at least in my category. Uh, our typical meets, we're in a closet because there's not as many people in our category, they just can't handle it, but uh, no. But uh, so we're in a smaller room and there's only a few, a few folks. Uh, here it was, again, you've got some parents, you've got some other people that are just attending state to watch the competition because it is that higher level, people sort of want to learn from that. And um, so it's a little bit more packed. But uh, and then the final rounds, it is, it's the same thing, except you really got a big room because those that don't final typically will stay and watch their category and the final, final eight people that go on there. So, yeah, absolutely. What other questions do we have, yeah?
So, so Benny, if you've been in this category, next uh, extempore uh, speaking, I think you kind of put yourself uh, as far as in a mindset of, I know how then to put something together, so do you like work, work on a pro and con? Is that how you present it? Do you just take something that you're given and then you only uh stand on the positive side and try to pitch that side? Uh, or vice versa, how, how, how do you lay that out for yourself?
Yeah, it's a great question and that is, that's been the fun thing is, over the years, it's definitely shifted.
Okay.
I uh, I used to start my speech with a quote and I thought, oh, that's sort of fun. No, it is not, that's not a good idea. But uh, normally we start with a little attention grammar and I know Taylor has a pre-written one, but I just sort of come up with one right when I'm reading over my questions, that's almost how I determine it. I'm like, oh, I can, I can think of something I can start my speech with, with this certain topic. So, for instance, one of my topics this year was, is the Federal Reserve still a uh, a good national economic regulator? And so my answer was, yes, it is. And so I sort of lay out this introduction, somehow I compare it to that, bring it to that point. And then I say, which begs the necessary question, yada, yada, yada. And uh, and the answer is a strong blank. And then I say, to prove this, we'll be looking, to prove my reasoning, we'll be discussing three main forms. Bam, bam and bam. So we go through that, uh, and then we do in summary, state the topic again, go over those three points. I always try to keep it to three points, again, seven minutes is my cap. And um, and from that point, I work into a conclusion that I like to tie in with the beginning of my speech. And so again, it's a different topic every time, but I have the same model, I'll call it, and that's sort of what you're asking there. So that, the topic varies, the introduction always varies, uh, but the model stays very similar, yeah.
Are you more nervous for your topic or staying seven minutes or less?
What do you think? Yeah, no. Good inspirations, yeah.
Well, I, 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 I have some similar traits to you, uh, you know, in, in over speaking sometimes. And when I put, when I put on a clock, it's not, it's not my favorite time to be, because.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll tell you, normally it's, I've got, I've got it down to, okay, I know where I'm at and it's nice they give in the room. And I'm pretty sure they do this for you as well, they give time signals, so you know where you're at. Well, at five minutes, they give you the two, at one minute, they give you the one. And at thirty seconds, they do a fist, and I always like to tell them, well, when I get to seven minutes, start standing up and waving. But they don't like that, but uh, anyway, so. At the state competition, they were really dicey topics at the end and I was, I was shocked at the final round. They're like, well, if you're, this is the best in the state, we're gonna give you that, challenging topics and holy moly, was it ever. But uh, with that, I was trying to get, work through the speech and I got to my conclusion statement and I hit that seven minute marker. So I had to sort of abruptly stop because when she hit that seven minutes, you're done or you're disqualified. And so that was disappointing for me because my conclusion wasn't as strong and that's, I don't know, that's a pretty big detractor. But uh, but no, you just try to, again, for me, it's you have that three, three points and I sort of know just in my head from doing it so many times, I know how long I can give each of my points. You sort of put a strong one at the top, weaker one in the middle and then a stronger one at the end. And that's, you know, you presented in that fashion, people don't remember the second point, they remember the top two and they, oh, that was decent, I don't think. Great, next speech, so, but, yeah, and then Taylor, Taylor has ten minutes each speech.
Ten minutes and it's very different from yours. I do not have to prepare a new speech every time, I don't think I'd be able to do that. But no, I just memorize, at the beginning of the season, I get my ten minute speech memorized. I usually pick that out, this year it was around four months before the season actually started, so I could actually start preparing for it and starting the season strong and getting everything just prepared and ready for that. But yeah, same speech every time, four times a day, it can get a bit tiring and.
Plus you have to listen to the same group of people every time. Oh boy, but uh, yeah.
So what was your topic, just, it wasn't Federal Reserve, I'm sure it wasn't that.
It's funny, you mentioned that.
Um, so I'm in a dramatic um category, which means I mainly focus on acting and theatrical presentation. So I basically chose a part of my favorite book that I think would be good for me to act out and present and really tell a story with my speech. So, yeah, it was just um, a really, to just display emotions, what I can do as an actor and what I am capable of doing in the future. Mm-hmm.
It sounded like you had a question to back there, no, no? Very good.
All right, well, thank you. All right.
Well, thank you to our, our student representative. It's just good to hear, you know, some behind the scene uh, things that, that go on and the responsibilities that our, our students take on. And Emily with the mock car crash and all the nuances with that. And, and I was actually just talking to David Smala, who's a speech coach and he has just been doing a wonderful job and been very successful. And I asked him what it was like and he was kind of describing it and I, it was just fascinating and, and uh, thanks for, thanks for sharing all that information. Thanks for having us.
All right, um, and with that, we'll invite Lisa Stain up. And um, so, um, and I, Chris, do you wanna? And, um, so, um, and, and Chris, do you wanna, um, launch any of that discussion as well or should I turn it right over to Lisa?
Uh, we could, yeah, we can listen to that.
I mean, it's, yeah, um, so if you need to see it, you can certainly stand or you can.
If I could stand with a little bit of.
And I'll stay back here.
Yeah.
What, has it, is that a requirement?
No, no, I'll just, um, cast it so that, um, people can see what we're talking about. And then, um.
So a couple of years ago, um, right after COVID, I got this crazy idea to have an early childhood playground right outside of our door. Um, the elementary playground is great, but when I bring in these ECFE families at night with these twos and threes, it's a little bit intimidating for those parents to bring them out to the big playground. So I got this wild idea to start the process of fundraising for, uh, an early childhood playground, which would suit kids' birth to five. Um, right outside the preschool doors. Um, so if you can go ahead and click it. Um, this would meet that age requirement for zero to five. Um, a big portion of this playground will be, um, have that, um, surface material called port in place, um, which would be handicap accessible, which would, um, meet those needs of some of our students, but also some generations that come and bring their kids to the playground as well. When grandma, grandpa bring them, if they need a little bit more cushion when they walk, um, or anyone like that. It'll be used for preschool students only during the school day evening. This summer, it will be completely open to families and the public. It'll be located right outside of Ms. Kestalut and I's classroom doors. And I talked to, Ken and I had a little meeting already about getting those fob, um, those doors. Because right now, they're not entrances, they're just exits. Also, uh, the retired teachers, uh, organization, I guess you could call it that. Uh, already donated a bench in memory of one of our teachers that has passed. So, uh, it's getting the word out and we're really starting to push it now. Um, go ahead and click it. This is, uh, the vision. You look at it. So they don't have a door there, but this would be, uh, my classroom door and then Ms. Kestalut's be right next door. Um, so that would be part of it. And you can go ahead and click another one. This, I guess, is a better one. Um, we'll be removing this tree and sliding these swing sets over just so we can have better access and vision for the whole thing. And then on this side will be just a grass area, kick a ball, a roll around in the grass. Um, this is the library door over there. Get a feel for what that would look like. Um, so you want to click it again. One more time. This is the overhead view. Um, I think I have a better picture of the fencing if we want to keep it going. Oh, we're gonna go to the total. So the equipment themselves, uh, runs about sixty-two thousand. Um, what the big chunk of this playground is going to go towards is that port in place. Uh, we could go with the mulch, um, but with having toddlers out there, you know where that's gonna go. Um, so we decided to go big because we're not going home. So we went with the port in place where you can see just that alone is a hundred and thirteen thousand. That's with the idea that we're gonna get community help when it comes that day to building it. Um, it's called a community build, um, where we do the, um, get the ground ready for it. Um, and we have, uh, an excavating company, whoever come in and dads and uncles and moms and, and aunts come in. Um, and that will save us a lot of money if we, they send a foreman out here, um, to, to run it all. But we do the manual labor and that will save us, um, a lot of money. But with that, you can see the grand total up there. Um, so it, it's a big chunk of change, so. I think there might be one more. If you're not sure what that port in place looked like, I threw some pictures in there, um, of some from other schools.
And we're, we're, we're still putting together final budgets. So we just showed you those two pieces. There's the keying of the doors, uh, then the, the fencing. So we're, we're still putting together some of that, like this is what it looks like. And then, um, we are, um, also gathering that where all the revenue is and where potential revenue will come, uh, come from. And then I'll, uh, we'll manage that in community, uh, manage that budget. And, um, and so we could keep track of our donors, uh, you know, versus a grant. So, so we have, um, Lisa's put together, uh, committees, a bigger group. And we've split things up. So we have some people looking at grant opportunities. Um, so in order to write grants, we have to have the full budget done and how much revenues we have. And if we're going to do that community build, there's an in-kind contribution that a lot of grants are looking for to be able to say, what are you doing to help with this? Like where, where is that coming from? So we're still finishing that up. And I know she's gonna, we're, our goal is to make it to the chamber meeting at the end of the month with, uh, with a lot of it done and ready to say, you know, to see what they think. And, and then start to present that to our local businesses. So.
Great. I think, um, there's one, oh, I was gonna say, I think another circuit to hit, um, as, as this is finalized and you kind of know, like, this is, um, how we're going to strategize all the costing, um, would be to hit some of our local community, um, you know, our community organizations. Yep.
Yeah, um. Is your next slide on our levels?
We're gonna find out. Oh, oh, there's your fence.
No, this is not fencing. Uh, it will obviously be fenced in for safety reasons.
Um, we're gonna try to incorporate the fencing into a donation opportunity, um, for families to purchase a fence post, get their name engraved or grandkid's name or whatever they want on it. Um, yeah, and Rachel, if you wanted to pull it up, that would be, uh, the Innovation Center did that for us.
They engrave it.
Nice.
They engrave it, yeah.
So cool, yeah.
We're working with Ford, Ford and Aon Plastics to make that happen. And to see what the cost of that is, which then we would know what we would, um, make that a fundraising opportunity, what level that would be at to make a profit off it. Uh, but that's where the fencing would go, would go. Um, I didn't have the levels on there. I weren't sure if they were set in place.
Well, we're, yeah, so we're working on a couple of different ways to support. One is your traditional, uh, bronze, silver, or bronze, silver, gold, platinum levels that can be, you know, certain, um, pay levels and then where they land on a marquee sign. Um, one other, uh, would be the fence posting. So if you wanted to, as an individual, donate a, you know, let's say it's two hundred dollars and then you could have your name or you could, someone's name on there. Um, we are looking at the possibility of adopting a piece of equipment. Um, that that could be a possibility as to how you, uh, how you might want to be involved. And then, um, they have some events that they have, they have a fall festival or do you call it the fall festival or fall fundraising event?
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a couple of events that they do, uh, as well that the proceeds go towards, uh, this project.
And then once this project is funded, we foresee keep doing those activities because there's always something else to add to it. We want to add, you know, planters boxes in those library windows to keep kids away from those windows and a shed for all of our stuff. So hopefully, once we get this funded, we keep that festival going just to keep, keep, uh, keep it up.
Making that sound too.
Any questions for?
So, so the budget that you put there as far as with that, that full, uh, dollar amount was, is that with or without the in-kind? Is it?
That's just those two things that are up there. Yeah, so the fence is not included.
Okay. Right.
Uh, I also put in a question mark installation. I wanted to know how much it would cost to professionally install it.
Yeah.
So then if we do a community install, that's my in-kind, like I know now how much my in-kind is when I have all those helpers. So I'm able to go to a grantor and say, because this is ten thousand dollars to install, I have a bunch of volunteers. So that's ten thousand dollars worth of work.
Gotcha.
So, so we have a couple more, you know, um, pieces of information we need to put in there. So the overall budget's going to be much higher than that because I'm, I want the professional installation in it. So that we can, I, I want everything that it possibly would cost. And then if we, if the fencing gets donated or is at a reduced price, I can utilize that in a grant. Yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
Um, I guess Ms. Stang, I, maybe it's a conflict, I guess I'm on the board, but I did reach out just to let you know. Um, to the, I'm on the Lick and Reliance Club and I have not spoke with Painsville Lions. But we had a, uh, a zoning meeting and I spoke with our district governor regarding, there's a, a program through, uh, Lions International where they have a, a matching program. And it wouldn't be, you know, matching what another individual does. It would be matching what a Lions, uh, club would do. And I'm still, I'm glad that you have these numbers because I will be picking your brain because I'll need that to fill out a, a matching grant through, uh, Lions International. I can't make any promises, but.
That was on our radar.
I'm the, I'm the type too that I don't let, uh, a tree unturned, I guess, or a rock unturned. Uh, if, if we can get some money there, I'd like to see us do that.
And I'm on, I'm in the Painsville Lions as well, which is why I suggested, once we have this all organized, to, I think, go to those different organizations. I think, um, you know, I think there are some different opportunities. But once you kind of know what that big dollar is, um, then we can really approach to say,
Yeah, we should.
These are, these are what we know for donations, these are what we know for grants. And yeah, that'd be great.
But I know through Lions International, I was told that, uh, it's a little bit of a, at a snail's pace. So now that you have that information, then I can get on that, so. I do have one question and my wife probably would be upset, upset for me by asking. Um, I note to your map there, couldn't we save the tree?
I have a question about that tree because that tree was donated for Chris, Chris Quail.
Oh.
Oh.
It was a memory tree for Chris Quail.
Oh, we didn't know that. No, okay.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Yes, then we have a different perspective on that tree.
Yeah.
We have no idea. This one, and it's a lot smaller than this, this isn't, but we had.
Yeah.
What is the old saying, or what is the old saying, you should have planted a tree yesterday, so.
Was there a reason it was there? Like, was she part of, who was that?
She was a second grade teacher. It's outside her door.
Oh, yeah, then it's outside the second grade windows.
You know what? It, it, then it stays because, you know, we all know that that can be a hot side of the building.
Yep.
And I, it will be, you know, it'll.
It'd be a great place for a picnic table, too.
Right, because we're talking about picnic tables and benches and, and things like that. So we just, we need to go back to our person and go, yeah, remember, we're gonna get rid of that tree? We're not. So we didn't go back.
They do for bringing that up, Connie. You had no idea.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, we definitely don't want to be the bad guys here on that one. So, yeah, that's.
And it makes the little ones run a little farther, right?
Yeah.
The swing set, get the energy out.
But there was a, there was a grassy area that would, that, you know, that does allow to move that swing set over. So it, it should all still fit.
And someday it'll provide that shade for adults that want to play in the grass in the shade.
Yeah. Will be, it will be good. You'll want that, quite frankly, so.
You have other questions?
Yeah, so we just really are kind of, this is a, um, so you're aware of what is going on. We kind of just wanted a little stamp of approval because we, once, once I get that budget all in one spot and we can see the big picture, then it probably will move a lot, it will definitely move a lot quicker. Then we'll be able to go make presentations, talk to businesses, um, and get the word out.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the roundtable, which is, uh, board member's opportunity to lift up questions, comments?
Ron, you have something? Um, um, I guess I had, and I guess I apologize. Well, I gotta go to this one. Um, I had some questions, I guess, uh, I, I respectfully sent to Janelle. Um, and I guess I wanted to bring it up to the, to the board. And it's regarding, if I can get it here from services, questions, here we go. I don't know. Janelle, do you want me to read your answers or, I guess, I'm, I'm open to suggestions here, um.
Oh, yeah. No.
Well, Ron, I got this.
Okay.
So Ron sent me three different questions, um, and I wasn't sure if those were questions for him to just pass out that somebody had a question and, and he asked me to share that out with you. So I'll just.
And, and it was kind of pertaining, I guess, no, when I sort of come onto the school board, it was some of the things, I guess, I kind of wanted to address. And, and I guess I'm, I just kind of want to know, um, but there were some other individuals, but I want to make sure I worded it right. I gotta find it though. What come it doesn't let me, uh, I got, I got where I, or you replied, but I don't have what you actually said.
Probably above it or below it.
It's regarding, I guess the first one was the, the cost involved in, in, in block scheduling is, you know, is it a, is it a savings or is it costing us more money?
Yep. So traditionally, I guess, and, and my, my response back is that I have not done a, a specific analysis of our block schedule compared to what it was prior. Um, traditionally, a block schedule is more, um, to maintain because you, you have fewer opportunities to teach, um, because you have four class periods versus six class periods, okay? Um, when you look at, um, offering, um, four class periods, um, so let's say I have, um, we'll use English nine as an example. Um, I only have that English nine teacher could teach. Oh, I can just wait a second.
I apologize. I was, I was hoping to find it.
Well, and I can, I mean, I can read it to you if you would prefer, but, um.
That'd be great.
So is there a cost savings, is there a savings or more cost involved in block schedule versus standard schedule? So here was my response. I've not done the specific cost analysis to determine the exact, exact cost differential. But I have been told that typical block schedule tends to be more expensive. What we have run in two years that we do not have designated middle school and secondary staff, so our staff teach both. So this is an issue in both a block schedule and a traditional schedule. However, when you have the opportunity to teach six class periods versus three, and I say six because when you have a seven period a day, you have a prep period, or three, and then a block, a prep block. Um, uh, so then, um, when you have the opportunity to teach six class periods versus three, there are more places to move classes. So what happens is when you have, okay, so one of the things, um, uh, one of the recognized benefits of the block schedule is to meet the needs of our labs and hands-on courses, which allow for more time to teach and allow for practice or project completion. At the sixth and seventh grade level, adjustments were made for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to have math and language arts every other day, um, all year long. That was a piece of feedback we heard from parents. They were concerned about, um, a student having math maybe first quarter and then not having math again, um, until later on in, in the block schedule. Um, so by, by having, um, parent teachers, they're able to have every other day. And then that partner teacher, they actually can, they could through mutual agreement, have kids maybe for two or three days in a row if they were working on something significant, okay? Um, so as a, as a smaller school, a block schedule can lead to scheduling conflicts for students. Um, and when that happens, the students are required to make choices about which classes they prioritize, which at times has led to frustration and not getting a class at a specific time of the year, okay? So those are some natural barriers that have taken place. Um, so then the next question was, um, is a teacher overload a common occurrence or is it just with a block schedule? So overloads have been a solution to implement in a couple of scenarios. Um, so this is my response now. If there is a course traditionally an elective, which has high demand or interest and there isn't an, a teacher available to teach it due to required courses, a teacher can pick up the offering and get paid on an overload. Additionally, if there is a scenario where we have not been able to fill a teaching position, colleagues, uh, will pick up the position through an overload. So over the last couple of years, we have reduced the number of electives to save on teachers being compensated for an overload. So we have not offered as many overloads in the past, in the past couple of years. Um, the maximum amount a teacher can earn for an extra class is four thousand five hundred and seventy dollars in a year. And that is prorated for each quarter. That's based on the master agreement. So the master agreement language for overloads has been standing since before the block schedule began. Um, it did occasionally occur in a traditional schedule, um, but it. um, but it, it was more prominent when we were trying to accommodate more elective courses through a block schedule, okay? And then the last question was the CPR class that is offered, what does it all entail? Um, hard to imagine that it would take a whole quarter to teach.
Okay, I found it, but I, I, I want, I don't want somebody to think that I don't think CPR.
CPR.
CPR is not important. I, I took that in college and, and I think it is extremely important, but um, you can leave to your answer, I guess.
Okay, so our CPR is actually, it's a CPR and first aid class that's offered in the middle school and it's an elective. Um, so it, it not only addresses CPR, um, it's, it's CPR and first aid. Um, so the intent of the elective is to prepare students who recognizing care for a variety of first aid, breathing, cardiac emergencies with adults, children, and infants. It provides them some um resources to, if they were at home and there was an emergency. It's, so it's not just certified CPR, first aid, it's kind of problem solving as a whole. Again, it's an elective that's offered at the middle school.
Thank you, Janelle, to clarify, I guess that was a concern I had, so.
Okay, yep, sounds good.
Um, I have one question, quick.
Yeah.
With family leave looking like it's gonna be, they're gonna pass it, do we have any idea what that's gonna cost us?
I have, I, I can't even begin to understand.
Okay.
Um, well, so the, it's gonna be paid for out of a payroll tax.
Right.
Um, and it's a, a tax that's shared between the employee and the employer. Um, what is going to be the biggest concern for me, um, is going to be substitute coverage. Um, because that's, that's a cost that we have not accounted for. Um, and it's unknown at this moment in time, if it's going to be eighteen weeks, twenty-four weeks. You know, the, so it has passed out of both the House and the Senate, now it's sitting in conference committee. So some of those details are yet to be hammered out. Um, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure, uh, what that cost is gonna be for us, um.
But we will have to put something into this payroll tax.
The district, that is responsible, yes.
So we will be responsible for putting money in.
Yep.
I think one of them said point seven percent, I don't know if that was together or each.
Um, I think that is a total and then it is split between employer and employee. And I haven't, I don't remember off the top of my head the percentage of the split.
I just want people to know, especially the public, know that there are things being passed in the state that are gonna affect us financially, you know?
There are, there are financial implications, yep. Um, and there's, there's a couple of other provisions that are moving that, that could have some implications.
Right, yeah.
Um, financially for the school district, but, yep.
Anyone else?
And the state is not going to fund any of this.
The, the state is not funding this.
So far, it's. It's going to be the school and the teachers funding this program.
It is employee and, and employer cost, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, and anyone else? I think we're finished.
All right, and it is three oh three.